I'm going to go ahead and call the General Services Meeting to order. It is 6:30. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Gully?
Present.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yes.
Council President Mantella?
Present.
Councilmember December, I am also present. Also present is Councilmember Kennedy. All right, so I am going to... So this is our third public meeting from the General Services Committee meeting related to the Mount Idale Dam and updates that the city has been providing us. We do have a public forum to begin the meeting. So I will ask if there's any residents that are interested in speaking. Now is the time to speak on this issue. Just to remind your residents, if there's anyone who wants to speak, you can step forward and state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Please.
Come up?
Yep, you can come up. State your name, address. You have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is George Jackman. I'm from Riverkeeper. And we are supportive of the dam removal effort by Troy. One, because it potentially impacts people downstream of that dam. In the past decade, there's been a 74% increase in rainfall in the Northeast. That rainfall is now stressing many of these dams that are antiquated and old. And right now, last June, the New York State Controller said they're repairing the failing dams just for municipalities in New York State. It amounts to about a half a billion dollars. And as more dams start to fail, that number is going to increase. Once you get into the cycle of repairing and rebuilding a dam, you get into this negative feedback. And when you have to repair that dam again, which you will, the cost will be at least doubled. So then you forever... The taxpayers are beholden to this dam. What is the cost of a natural stream? Nothing. What is the liability to the city? Nothing. What is the liability if a dam breaches? Quite high. What is the impact to the ecosystem? Significant. There are over 1,500 dams in the Hudson Valley. And we think that some of these dams that serve no viable purpose need to be removed. And it impacts the ecology of the Hudson River and the species that we're trying to protect. And 2016, Riverkeeper, D E C, and the City of Troy engaged in a movement that galvanized the Hudson Valley. They removed a dam on the Wyman's Kill that had been blocked for 85 years. River herring are now down anywhere from 95 to 99%. American eels are depleted. Almost every signature fish in the Hudson River is in decline. If we do not do something to help fish and the ecosystem, these fish will perish in our lifetimes. The City of Troy removed that barrier. Within four days, river herring moved into the Wyman's Kill. That was the first dam in Hudson Valley removed expressly for fish. We now have several other dams that are earmarked for removal. We think a lot of these dams that serve no real human infrastructure that are antiquated, old mill industrial dams should be removed. And we should restore our waterways for the rightful owners, which are the fish. Some people might say these dams are historic. Nothing is more historic than the water or the fish themselves. And what we need to restore is the natural ecosystem and the natural flow of water. Each dam behind it chemically and thermally impacts the ecosystem. Dams represent the most violent impact to a waterway than just about any other structure. Not only that, they're extremely dangerous. If you play around a dam, they're what we call an attractive nuisance. You get caught in that hydraulic recirculation, there's no escaping it. So not only are they a liability if they breach, they're a liability if somebody gets hurt around that dam. All we say is, if it serves no real human need, then maybe we've got to think about taking these artificial impoundments and restoring the ecosystem back to its natural course. Thank you very much.
George, just... I'm sorry, one more. Can you just state... You said you're with Riverkeeper?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with Riverkeeper. Can you just give me a quick... What is that you're...
Riverkeeper is an NGO that is... We defend the Hudson River. We're a nonprofit organization that looks to safeguard the Hudson River, protect against... We've protected against PCBs. We've litigated to have GE clean up the PCBs in the Hudson River. We have just litigated and won against Indian Point to have them shutter Indian Point because it kills a billion fish a year on those water intakes. We are the defenders of the Hudson River. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Further comments from the public? You have five minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mike Tucker. I'm here representing Amphasand, the owner of the hydro plant downstream of the Idale Lake Dam. With respect to the previous comments, certainly Riverkeeper has done a phenomenal job in certain areas. But this dam does have a viable purpose, both through recreation and through the water power of the historic water power of the Postonkill Gorge. And between the Hudson River and the two dams is a 180-foot gorge. So it's not as if fish will be able to come up into the Postonkill Creek and climb the gorge to the two lakes. In any event, I think to give you an update on where Amphasand is, we appreciate the cooperation that we've had from the city administration and their public utility office and their consulting engineers. We've had a meeting with D E C to discuss the project. Clearly, D E C's position was that to the extent the city, as the owner of the dam, has requested a permit to do work to repair its dam, that if the state did not issue the permit and there was a catastrophic failure of the dam, which they did not opine to, that the state would be held liable because they had been the entity that didn't give the city the permit to do the work. I think one of the things that we're not going to be able to resolve at this point is the engineers' disagreement as to whether the condition of the dam is as bad as one side says or the other side says. There's maps that were done with the comprehensive plan for the city that show a different water inundation from a different water model than the city's current engineers. We're not going to resolve that at this point. The reality is, is that the state has issued the permit and the city is planning to proceed with the work. So I think that what we are hoping to do, and it's clear that the city recognizes the potential damage to the hydro facility should the contractor not be able to control the flow of the water and the control of the silts. But also balancing that against his other concerns that there be a catastrophic failure of the dam under certain storm conditions that would inundate properties. At this point, the company has requested that... While they were disappointed that D E C did not incorporate the conditions that they had requested. Amphasand requested certain parameters of the scope of work and the way the work would be done. They've asked the city and the contractor to review those with them and to determine whether some or all of those conditions could be incorporated into the work, where Amphasand would be providing a cooperative environment to provide input to the contractor and to the city and its utility office based on the years of experience they've had operating the downstream dam. So we continue to look forward to working with the city. As I said previously, they've been very transparent. They've been very open. There's been good dialogue, not always agreement. But I think that at this point, my request was to meet with the city in the next few days prior to the mobilization of the contractor to explore how the work would be done to ensure mitigation of the silts that might damage the hydro. Any questions?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. How's the president?
Very quick question. Mike, have you provided the city with the conditions that your company is looking for?
They were copied on the request to D E C. And I think that there are things that need to be discussed because they were presented by the company who... They're not here in Troy. And Dave Crandall, who has operated the plant for them through Mercer Construction, has operated these facilities. There's some question, can you pull the sluice gate? City's engineer says they couldn't find the chain and it might be difficult. Crandall said that he's done it many times. So to the extent you can have an in-the-field to offer the dialogue and try things. Seaway Diver is an excellent contractor. Amphasand has used them. I've used them on the hydro plants that I still own. And I think that the issue as to what will happen once the water... The dam is de-watered and what is determined to be the extent of the damage to the dam and what is required to repair or replace it is a separate discussion. And D E C has said it's a separate permitting process. So I think at this point, you have to... We have to acknowledge that the permit's been issued. The work's about to start. How can we provide information and assistance to ensure that the contractor has sufficient information to be able to mitigate and potentially eliminate any damage resulting from the silts being released during the work that they're doing?
That was my follow-up. Mike, you know, as the prior canal director, we worked with a number of hydro plants. So with those third parties, obviously came, let's just say, a risk if the hydro and the water was obviously being decreased. So at this point, you have not put the city unnoticed. I take it, and you plan to work with us through this process?
I think the goal is to ensure that the work will not result in silt inundation or other damage to the plant or facility. To this point, that has not happened. I think everyone's aware that there's a risk of that happening. Certainly, the contractor is aware that his work needs to be staged and sequenced in a way that will not put the city in that position. And the ability to provide the knowledge that Dave Crandall has from running this plant for the last 32 years is important to ensure that the contractor doesn't have to accept his input or guidance, but it's certainly worthwhile to have.
Well, I'll just go on record saying, you know, I do hope moving forward, there can be that partnership to ensure that all authorities can move forward together.
And I do too. And I think that, you know, obviously, the concern... The second concern is the long-term concern.
Yes.
But the statute provides a pretty extensive D E C review and also the issue that will come to you with respect to the funding of any improvement, any repair or replacement.
Chair, thank you. Councilmember Kennedy, and then Councilmember Cummings.
Just, has Amphasand made any financial commitments to either construction or repair or future ongoing maintenance costs as a secret benefit?
Those discussions have not arisen. I mean, at this point...
Internally?
No, the concern at this point is that this work not be done in a way that damages their plant.
So there's no intent to make any financial contribution to the future?
Yeah.
My question is, is there any intent that Amphasand Energy has to make any financial contribution to the future of the dam?
At this point, you're the first person from the city to ask that question. And I'll go back and discuss that with them. There hasn't been a request. There hasn't been a request yet. There hasn't been a request from the meetings that we've had for a contribution, primarily because I don't think anyone knows what the cost is going to be. But I certainly... You know, there's always opportunity for discussions.
Councilmember Cummings.
So as I understand it from discussions, sort of the ideal and median thing from your perspective is to try to open this gate?
That's really the city engineer, Chernable, and the contractor's decision. But we're going to give them our input as to... And I think Seaway Diving, they are the ones that we send down when our chain can't be found.
Sure.
And they hook it up and they get a jackhammer. A lot of it's going to determine whether the contractor thinks it's safe under these current conditions to put their men or women divers in the water. So I think, again, this stuff gets done in the field. Engineers can sit in the office and we can all discuss and plan how it's going to happen. But when you get out in these water conditions, it's really an hour-by-hour process as to, are we going to start this today? Or is there too much water? Are we going to wait till tomorrow?
But from your perspective and the impact on the hydro facility, if this gate were to open, I assume significant sediment would probably wash through initially. I guess the hope would be that we had a one-time event?
The initial plan was the city contractor was going to take out significant silt behind the dam. So when you opened it, you were not... You weren't opening it where the silt was. That would be some... You know, you can't... I'm sure you can't get it all off the dam when you do that. But I think that's some of the concern that Amphasand has. Will the contractor go back a foot on each side of the opening? Then there will be silt. If he goes... And I'm not an engineer, but some multiple of feet... Will there be less? And I think that obviously, the question goes to the council members' question about cost. If there's, in the field, a discussion about doing more than the contractor thinks is necessary, there ought to be some discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we've got more questions, maybe we'll call you up later. But for the public's comment, we'll continue to request... So I do see a hand. What we have done in the past for these meetings, let's get through the public comment period. And then there will be another question-and-answer period at the end. That's how we've...
Sure.
But you can steer discretion.
Yeah. We'll do that for fairness and give you a chance.
I just wanted to rebut something he said.
Okay, well, we'll hold out till the end and then you can provide that comment afterwards. Is there further comments from the public? Okay. Oh, please come forward. Yep. State your name and address for the record. You've got five minutes.
Mark Effernan, 34 Brunswick Road. I share Mr. Tucker's admiration with Riverkeeper and their work on the river. But I also question the relevance of this on the effect of migratory fish as it is up the gorge. And I also rebut the statement that there is no human use to this dam as it does provide a great deal of access to the Postonkill in the City of Troy, which is a valuable asset to the city. Thanks. You know, we've convened a group of citizens, as you all know, friends of Idale Lake. And we've been working on this issue collectively for many hours, really. And it's been a little disheartening that our input into this issue is limited to five minutes at a podium uninterrupted and to be answered after our statements. We have hours of work into this. We'd like to... And it's not just, you know... It's not just citizens. It's scientists and geologists and ecologists and engineers and architects who are professionals in their field and really could bring their skills to bear on this situation if we had some mechanism of inclusion in the discussion about this emergency action aside from this brief comment period. We continue to share a trepidation about the destructive demolition of this dam, which we fear will create a destabilization of the dam. It's... As questions have been raised in the past, the fear is that we're creating a sieve for destructive debris to come down the stream and become caught. You know, in this current situation with the dam intact, debris can wash over the dam. In the case of the destruction of the dam, in the partial demolition, we're creating a sieve catch for debris which structurally compromises the dam. Right now, it is a continuous sheer diaphragm, albeit with some damage. But its stability depends upon its cohesion. And I continue to feel trepidation about the destabilization of the dam as a result of the destructive demolition, the partial demolition of it. I believe that what we're looking at here is really just a case of regular maintenance, although deferred by 15 years or so. There is a sluice gate present in the dam that is there for de-watering the dam, for proper inspection of the dam and for proper maintenance of the dam in a way that is in accord with public safety. And it is our wish and hope that the city would put that sluice gate to use in a maintenance action to be able to inspect this dam and repair it. I know as a contractor myself that a standing structure is a lot easier to repair than tearing it down to its foundations. That's a much more economical approach. I don't tear the side off a house to fix the house. There is a calculated risk with having a dam. And that calculation has, you know... At any time, any infrastructure could fail. A bridge could fall into the creek. Every action that we do is a calculated risk. Because the engineers have assessed it to be at risk of failing in the next 12 months, doesn't mean that it's going to fail in the next 12 months. And I question the engineering behind that. As Mr. Tucker also stated, you know, it's one thing to work behind a desk and work in theory. And it's another thing to know what happens in reality. I work with timber and I know... I feel that this dam is in serviceable shape. And I would hope that the city would undertake the regular maintenance that has been deferred by past administrations and preserve this valuable asset to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Further comments from the public? Okay. Yes, yes, come step forward. State your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brian McKinnon. I work for the Seaway Program. So we do work with Riverkeeper, full disclosure. A little bit here and there.
Brian McKinnon.
And just to clarify a little bit, you know, eels actually do make it up the gorge. They make it over the dams. We have lots of surveys that show actually quite a few eels, for instance, under Postonkill. So they're pretty clever little devils. They can get a lot further than we think they can. Just for clarity, so people know that. And I also like to say that I am sympathetic to those residents who have formed an attachment with me and come with. I like water. I'm a hydrologist. I personally built lots of little dams and little streams. So I can identify with those attachments. People like to fish, like to ice skate. And I know that historically, this dam in Idale Lake has been very important. It's mentioned a lot in, say, an old newspaper, for instance, just in terms of the number of residents that have come and used Idale Lake for ice skating. But let's face it, you know, these days, most people are sitting at home watching TV or playing video games or surfing the web. They're not really utilizing Idale Lake like they used to in terms of, you know, ice skating and regarding fishing, for instance. You know, if we... I'm sort of moving beyond here. I'm getting to the point of, say, in August, when we have to decide what we're doing with this dam. Like, I know what we're doing right now. We're going to proceed with this repair-reaching situation. But just looking further down the road, when you guys are considering, should we replace the dam or should we just pop it out? What I like to say is, if we do rebuild this dam, we're going to have to do it to current dam safety standards. Now, that's most likely going to involve, you know, like a concrete gravity dam. And for a dam this large, you're probably talking somewhere between $1 million and $2 million bucks. These things are expensive. And in addition, you have to maintain them and repair them and make the break. So there's additional costs down the road. And if you want to make something like Idale Lake truly fishable, it's pretty well-silted in now. Tends to get pretty algae-infested. And it's lost a lot of its habitat, a lot of its depth. Not as good of a fishing spot as it might have been. And the latest estimates for dredging that pond to make it deeper, make it more diveable, swimable, fishable, are around $700,000. So you add $700,000 to the probably upwards of $2 million to rebuild this dam, you're talking somewhere near $3 million bucks. And let's say this dam lasts for 50 years. And let's say we've got 100 people that come down there and fish every year. Each one of those 100, they catch 10 fish. So you've got 1,000 fish a year coming out of this pond. Over the course of 50 years, which is the lifespan of that dam, that's 50,000 fish. Sounds like a lot of fish. That's a value that's provided to the residents. But if you divide that into the $3 million that costs to build that dam, that's $60 a fish. So I don't know about you guys, but I don't really feel great about taxpayer money going towards paying for other people's $60 perch when we can pop this dam out for a lot cheaper. And I could go catch free trout out of there. You know, that's kind of why I'm just kind of thinking more long-term when you guys are deciding what to do. And again, I very much appreciate local residents... And again, I very much appreciate local residents' attachments to this empowerment, but I do want to emphasize that if we pop this dam out, what would be left in its place? It would just like the Poston Hill upstream, we're downstream, beautiful, and you have lots of fishing opportunities and tagging opportunities and boating opportunities just on the river itself without the dam in place. And it'll, it'll make it easier for American eel to get further up the Poston Hill to access their critical habitats.
You've got about a minute left.
Okay. It's just in regards to historic preservation, because, you know, some people get attached to the idea of the historic value of the dam. I respect that as well, I, I'm a nostalgic person, so, but I do want to emphasize that this dam has already been torn down and rebuilt the last time it was built, so it's actually only as old as the late 90s. And in addition, if folks are concerned about historic preservation, oftentimes what can be done to address that, which is a valid concern, is chunks of the dam can be left in place, but that are up on the banks, that are out of the active channel, and interpretive science can be installed that can educate the public about the historical significance of the dam. So I'll just leave it at that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Council President.
Brian, um...
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm surprised that you're here. I worked with the estuary as prior director of the Hudson River Valley Greenway. I applaud everything Fran, the estuary has done. I guess my biggest question, I appreciate all those facts, are you here officially from the estuary because it concerns me and my eel? DEC grants the permit, DEC oversees the estuary program, and I kind of see that as a potential conflict telling a municipality, you can just issued a permit by your boss, the impacts of decommissioning the dam. So I'm just a little concerned here at the...
Sure, sure. I, this was, I'm here personally to tell you, because, you know, we have a, an initiative to try to help where we can, where we have dams that are just kind of old and derelict, that don't really serve a great economic purpose, that aren't also, it's not just about money, people, people do like swimming, they like fishing, and I'm sympathetic to that. But we do have initiative, and I personally prefer pre-flowing rivers, so I'm not here to make any official statements on behalf of DEC or ATRP, it's, I'm here mostly just to speak for the river and speak personally for myself, because I know I, personally I'm a fly fisherman, I'm a kayaker, I like pre-flowing rivers, so I just wanted to...
Okay. I appreciate that because when you introduced yourself, you introduced yourself as the Hudson River Estuary, and it's...
Oh, I didn't want to, I must be new.
As a former state agency director, I find it very unorthodox doing that in this, so...
I'm also new, I've only been here for a couple of months, so...
Did Fran approve you coming? I guess that's my question.
Um, well, I, I think, I know that somebody I work with knows I'm here. I didn't say necessarily that I was going, I don't have anything prepared, nothing has been approved.
It's okay, as long as you're not here officially.
I am not here officially, I'm wearing no, no...
But I do want to applaud, obviously, everything the estuary does, thank you for all those facts, and, and nice to meet you, Brian, thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you for this, Council President. Further comments from the public? Seeing no comments? I would, so the re, so we, this is our third, this is our third general services meeting, the reasons we have called these meetings together was to get open and transparent process and to allow the administration to give us our regular updates on this issue. I would ask if the deputy mayor or someone from the administration has the most recent updates that you've been working on, we would, this would be the time to bring those up.
We're a team, Chris. The team approach.
Chris was hiding, he was ducking.
We have matching vests. Good evening, everybody, good evening, everybody. So we do have a couple of dates, and I also, I did ask questions, I met with Mark actually last week, and he, we had a good sit-down, I know he met with Chris as well, and we had a nice conversation on site. So I did get some responses from Schnebel about some of the questions regarding the sluice gate and then some other things too, so I'll answer those. I will do an update, we did receive the permit from DEC as well as all the secret documentation, there are limitations on it, obviously, as we've been telling you as we've gone through. The permit is, is valid for a year just for this specific act of the, the controlled breach. It does tell us in the permit, and we will put this permit up online as well for everybody to see, as long as with, as with all of the other documentation that comes with it. There are some specific conditions, we do have to send notification as we normally always would do, we have to minimize the stream disturbance, minimize turbidity, we have to redo the site grading and the seeding, but one of the other pieces of this is within 12 months after the completion of this work, we have to submit a plan for the future dam or whatever the next piece is. So we...
Count the...
We said 12 months.
Within 12 months, oh yeah, so within 12 months of completing this breach, this temporary breach, we have to send to them a plan for the future work. So that is stated right in the permit itself, and then we have benchmarks that we have to hit with them as well, too. The secret documentation, it is a type 1 action, will be included in all the documents that we put online, we'll upload them tomorrow for everybody to have, and then it also does go into some of the, you know, the descriptions and all that kind of stuff that you have to do for the seeker. The DEC is lead agency on this action, so that's the update of that. We do anticipate starting site work, release mobilization on Tuesday, weather dependent, obviously, we have to look at some of those pieces as well, too. They will start being at the site on Tuesday just to start looking at some of that stuff as well. So a couple of the questions that have been repeatedly asked, and I apologize because I had thought that I had asked them to our engineer before, but I did after meeting with Mark, the sluice gate seems to be coming up a lot. We do know that it's not operable, there's a chain missing, it's kind of sealed into place right now, there's a ton of sediment around it on the top side, obviously, to be able to access it from the top, and then the bottom side, obviously, the chains are missing. So I did ask, and this was the question I asked, if the sluice gate were being able to be opened once we got the sediment off, what does the release, the next steps look like then? And I said I'd like to be able, be able to address this at tonight's meeting. And the response is supposedly we could safely open the gate, but best case, that would allow us to lower the pool temporarily to observe the face of the dam and assess, and assess and remove the damaged sections in the dry. This would not lightly impact our overall recommendation of removing the damaged center section, but observing it in the dry could show us differing conditions and not current, that are currently observable, and these observations can inform a revised opinion. Exactly what Mike talked about, field conditions will always dictate the next steps. So if we're able to open that sluice gate, which we will certainly, if we are able to do it safely and access it safely, we will certainly see if we can do that, and then we can do, we can take a, a change of the field conditions of that. But he did say, keep in mind that all of the concerns others have expressed with their plan apply to the gate, the local velocities will increase and could carry a heavier, heavier bed load downstream, and the gate could easily become blocked by debris, easier than the larger opening that we are suggesting. Also, the gate has a limited capacity and may not be able to pass the base flow well enough to lower the pool enough to allow what is supposedly, supposedly above. During storm events or high base flows, the dam will stop, will still overtop even with the gate discharging. Finally, the gate is poorly designed, at this point in time, it would be challenging to operate safely even if it were brand-new. The operator would have to be standing in the water above the gate and pull a chain, or stand under the dam, dam and pull the chain while avoiding the high-velocity discharge. If a diverge were to try and succeed, they would be subject to local high velocities and be at risk of getting sucked into it. So like I said, we will look to see if we can do that, but we will have to assess the site conditions and also the safety of that action as well, too. So I also put forward the Councilman Cummings' concern about the blockage within the framing during a weather event. After the initial work is done, you will need to routinely keep the area free debris. Still, it is certainly possible that debris will be carried from upstream areas during storm events and hang up, hang up on the vents. The area we're planning to open is substantial, and we can always open more once we get into the field conditions, so it is unlikely it'll become entirely blocked and prevent flow from passing. Supposing the storm comes and brings enough debris to block the areas between the vents and the pool fills and the dam fails, the water that would be released would be less than what would be released if the dam were to remain and fail during the same event. Essentially, by lowering the pool, we are reducing the stored water and reducing the consequences of the failure. If there were no consequences, huge failure, our efforts are an attempt to reduce the consequences and subsequently the risk. Removing the entire dam is the only way to completely eliminate the risk, we are attempting to balance a lot of factors. And then one of the other questions that Mark had asked me was about the modeling. Was it an insustentious breach or slower timeframe that created the modeling at 100%, or 150%, and those are the two different floodplain levels? We produced the maps for a dam break for both the 100% and the 150%, which are 100-year events. I'm not sure which one you have, well, I can't remember that, but the map should have a legend or a title telling you what you're looking at. In both cases, the map shows the result within a 15-minute failure time with a 135-foot breach. We ran a number of cases testing the sensitivity to the breach with the time, generally, the shorter the breach time, the higher the peak flow, and the larger the breach width, the larger the peak flow. In nearly every case, there is an incremental impact where additional structure is flooded due to the dam break compared to when there is no dam break, thereby justifying the increased hazard classification. I know there's also been a lot of conversation between Class A and Class B, right now, it is a Class A dam, and until DEC confirms that and does their analysis on the information that's provided on the Class B, then it is still a Class A. So until that is done and determined by the, by DEC, it would only switch at that point in time. I would like to remind everybody, this is a temporary, temporary project, there is still a long-term project, and I would like to say tonight, we are confirming the date, time, and location, but we are looking at February 20th at the Italian Community Center to have a big public meeting, and that's where we'll start looking at the future of the dam, those pieces of what we want to do as far as, you know, taking the public's comments about future dam, no future dam. We will, before that timeframe, Chris and I are actually going to try to get in touch with SHPO, they are the ones who said it is historic, but we also need to know what that means. Like, we really need clarification on that. And then also, part of the conversation that we had with Amper Stan at the DEC offices in Rotterdam, were that, you know, provided that it isn't historic, if SHPO says yes, put it way, put it back the way it is, and what that type of construction looks like with DEC, whether they would approve the DEC regulations of that, as was mentioned earlier. So there's a lot of what-ifs, and we need to get, we're going to try to clarify some of those outstanding questions that we have and our engineers have with the agencies that we're working with, that they proposed, so that we can bring some of that clarity to the 20th, and hopefully have some that will help further discussions. Because if it's one way or another, it will lead the direction of that meeting in a totally different way as well, too. We're sensitive to all of that, but we do want to have, and we want to start kicking off those meetings. So this will be a public meeting, February 20th at the Italian Community Center, we tried to get an large enough venue to be able to hold a few hundred people, so that we can make sure that the public is involved. And that also includes the lower neighborhoods, that is actually the night of the Little Italy and the, obviously, the Little Italy, Little Italy neighborhood meetings.
Right.
So Sam Shippow graciously said he would open up the meeting as a whole for this conversation.
And I do appreciate that, I understand, I appreciate the comments from the public about their frustration in this, in this forum, and this forum is, is to ensure that the administration has an opportunity to speak to the, to us, and so I am thankful that you are planning those events, because I think that is the opportunity where we can really go back and forth, people can ask their questions and get a better sense of where we are and what, what's going on. I did see a couple hands up, Councilmember Cummings, Councilmember Kennedy, and then Council President.
Yeah, so could you get into a little bit of the details of the, the timeline? I guess either way, the first step is basically dredging with the hydro shovel or...
No. I met with Seaway today, with Schnebel, the first step they're going to start on Tuesday is they're going to access underneath the dam from the cemetery side and do an evaluation themselves of what it looks like under there, and then they are going to build the channel underneath there. So that's going to attach plywood to the vents, so when it is opened up, the water will not just go through and wash out the rest of the vents underneath. So that is the first step. The second step they're going to do is they are going to put a, a small floating platform in the water, or on the ice, and go out there and actually have a form that they're going to drill to the vents now, that will actually de-water a portion of the dam. So it's a, it's a modified cofferdam, and then they're going to de-water that area and start going down. When they get to the sediment, they are going to hydro shovel the sediment out before the water is released from that...
What do you mean by start going down?
Well, they have to relieve the water on the backside of that cofferdam, so it doesn't, it's not a waterproof system.
So they'll pump the water out of that area, that area?
Yes, correct. And then...
They'll keep the water down to the sediment.
And then they will use the hydro shovel, get the sediment out, to put that into the bags that'll be on the north side, the north shore. It's going on the north shore because it's access that we have, that we can get equipment in to remove the sediment when it's out of the water and de-water. So that is the best way to get it off of the dam. When they get down to a point, they are going to try to open the sluice gate, before they get down too far, they are going to try to open it, but even as...
Either way, though, they'll have done the hydro shovel clearing of sediment first?
First thing is get the sediment out of the way, as in the permit with DEC is turbidity, anything to do with turbidity or sediment is, you know, the permit is to reduce it at all costs. Then they're, you know, try to activate, try to remove the sluice gate if they can, but going back to the other concerns, the sluice gate is still not the permanent portion that we need at this point in time. We can't just open a sluice gate and let it go for the next year until we pump up the next plant.
Sure.
We need something a little more open to handle storm events, like what it's going through right now.
Okay, great. And then, all right, so then, you know, try to do this sluice gate, sluice gate either doesn't open...
Even if it does, we still have to carry forward the rest of the project.
I guess, does that process of that modified cofferdam give you an opportunity to get a look at the, the top of the dam, de-water it?
A portion of it, yes.
Move the sediment and get a better sense of, sort of what, how much, how many of those...
Yes, now, we're looking at, we're looking at removing a 30-foot section. The cofferdam they're building is going to be probably 10 feet. They're working a 10-foot section and then moving it over, working on a 10-foot section, moving it over, so it's not like we're just, they're not just going to go in there and rip it open. It's going to be very systematically, very, you know, oriental, meaning...
And does it just allow you to remove the sediment directly on top of the dam, or how far back from there do you go?
They're going to go back as far as they possibly can, but it depends on the water level, you know, with the, with the weather's law. So a lot of the discussion today was we have to watch the weather forecast. If there is a large storm event coming, they're going, the idea is, what they mobilize, within a day, they can de-mobilize. So if there's a large storm event, they can get their floating platform out, they can get the cables out, they can get all their gear out, so that doesn't end up downstream or cause any sort of clog on the vents.
What's your sense of, how much does the ice and winter weather affect this process?
None at all.
It's not more expensive or more time?
It's a little more expensive, because they have to use hot water, they have dry, they have suits on, so they put hot water in to keep themselves working. Everything else is the same, might be a few more hours to break the ice up. Their biggest concern was the way the dam looked yesterday and Monday, Tuesday, with big ice underneath. That was their concern, because that reduces access into, like, under the dam. But that's all.
For now.
For now.
I do want to, I, one of the things I wanted to address is, I know Mr. Tucker got up for Amper Stan and had some comments, and we did, we have been in communication, like Mike says, with the two companies, but I do want to let you know, too, that while they have requested certain things from DEC, we did actually, in response to one of their employees, he's the Director of Special Projects, Jason Hall, he was the one who kind of sent the first initial email over saying, you know, you could do this and you could do that, we're going to hold the city liable. So we, Chris actually, after we communicated, did send out to Jason, in light of the pending liability concern, we've included Corporation Council, obviously at that point in time. What we did do is, in our due diligence, knowing that we are doing work and we, you know, are looking for, we know that they have concerns as well, we also requested a copy of the past two inspections on the turbines of the plant, any underwater inspections on the intake structure or internal structures of the plant and sediment surveys of the Poston Hill. You would also like to request a copy of any and all documentation that you might have that provides information as to the ability of the facility to operate. This should include permits required to operate within hours of operation, amount of energy generated, and amount of water that is required to operate. So we have requested those items, just so we can have some preliminary information, especially if they've done inspections of their turbines, so we have preliminary, this is pretty standard in construction world, to do pre-survey, and then we have the ability to, to go back on records and say this was the condition prior to the work, and then that way, if something does happen or if there's a concern that's raised, we have the ability to kind of take that information back and forth. So we're still waiting for that information, we're hopeful that we'll get that from Amper Stan, because they do sediment removal, they do have hopefully some... do have, hopefully, some surveys of the sediment themselves. So we're just waiting here back from them on that. So we're doing our due diligence as far as that Amper Dam and also working collaboratively. We did include them, we did say that in our weekly updates to DEC and to the agencies, we would include them in that information. And then we also said that we would have the ability to have Dave Crandall, you know, be a part of the discussions and stuff like that, in addition to what we do with the representatives from the community. I did have that conversation with Mark, that maybe there was a way to include Mark maybe in some of those weekly updates as well, so they had some more information on the citizen side rather than just giving it all to the commercial property down below.
Thank you. And just to confirm, what kind of involvement are you envisioning for Dave Crandall?
So we, during the DEC meeting, that we said when we did weekly job site meetings or whatever, we had them included, there's field conditions that we noted, we would certainly let them be aware of that as well, too.
Great, thank you.
I think it's important to note, though, that this, they're one of many property owners that affects, that can be affected by this.
With significant expertise and track record with similar agents. But yes, well, let's see. Do we have any models of the probability? Well, not right now. We've got flooding.
Flooding?
Yeah.
The hand that goes out last year.
Of flooding in the spring, but actually, he answered the following question, I guess that doesn't matter, which is that it's not more expensive right now, anyway. Right, so you got it.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yep. One question, is, my one question, is the dam that's historic or the lake? Do we not, do we not?
Came first, chicken egg. I don't know. SHPO, in the letter back from SHPO, it states that some sort of structure needs to be, it's, how they say, in their opinion, a structure needs to be there. Through multiple avenues, it's been discussed that sometimes them stating a comment like that means you take a piece of it on the side with a picture of what here once stood compared to a full dam structure. So that's what we need to get clarified from SHPO by the 20th.
Council President.
Chris, in, I spoke earlier, Chris, with the weather, obviously, you said you were going to go up there, obviously, check on the dam.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, that's my question. How's the runoff? Because this actually happened, like, very, very quickly, the snowmelt, et cetera. It's running?
It's running really good. Luckily, right now, it's more ice which is going over the dam, and as it's going over, you can hear it, you can hear it breaking up as it goes over. So it's not more of the debris and the trees that we're seeing right now, it's more of the ice. So the ice will float and go over it. The spring, when you start to get the trees and that sort of thing, that's what comes out and actually hits the dam. So if we were to start to stack up on top of each other, it'd really be a concern.
And then my last question, you had mentioned that the setup can be taken down in a day. Being involved in many cofferdams along the Mohawk, I've never seen a cofferdam being able to be taken down in a day, so I take it everything else but the cofferdam is easily taken down?
Nope.
Can they actually take that cofferdam down in a day?
They're building a cofferdam that's going to be made out of C-channel steel, and so it's going to be an open frame. So they bolt it to the dam with six bolts, and it has a foam edge around the bottom side, which keeps it kind of watertight. And then it has tongue groove boards that they slide into it to divert the water. So within a day, they can easily take the tongue groove boards out and remove and take the bolts out and remove the cofferdam, pretty much slide right back on their floating...
Plus, much smaller probably than the Mohawk.
That's, yeah, yeah, it's 10 foot wide.
It's a little less, yeah. Okay, cool, thank you.
The one concern that the divers had, they said, you know, they said they understand this is kind of, you know, high visual. They were concerned about any, you know, passerby, I said, for safety, do what you need to do. I said, get caution tape. I said, you're going to get people that want to come and see. I said, you have a job to do, you need to do your job safely, and, you know, people shouldn't be getting into an area that's unsafe. So they said, if they see any concerns, they'll let us know.
So you're saying we can't go down in the tunnel or anything?
Not while they're there. Not while they're there. I mean, we fully anticipate people to come up and take a look and see what's going on. You know, the neighborhood groups have been great, there's a lot of comment, there's a lot of interest, so we fully expect that. My only request would be let the contractors do their jobs, it's not, it's not their fault. They're tasked with the...
Don't try pulling them, okay?
Right, right. You know, don't cut their cordis or underwater because he's working, you disagree with it.
Further comments? I did have one question, so, and for those listening at home, it was February 20th at the ICC. What time are, is the meeting planned for?
We'll confirm the time, I think.
In the evening?
Yeah, it'll be in the evening. It's definitely in the evening. I would say probably six, I think. Six or seven. We'll confirm that, we'll put public notice out, we'll email the neighborhood group, we'll make sure we get it out on social media and out in an email blast as well, too.
Great, and Mike, I would ask if you keep the citizen group that's been working on